... sustainable in the future. So there are five primary goals, and the first is the pre-arrest decision point. There are a number of programs that we've implemented over the last couple of years that look at that pre-arrest decision point. And here I want to highlight is the Sioux Falls Police Department took leadership in developing a number of new policies that fall under the MacArthur Foundation primarily for deflection of people bringing them when they encounter them in the community, bringing them someplace other than jail. And the link is one of those programs. Also want to talk about data. The MacArthur Foundation is very focused on gathering data. And the reason they do that is because they want to know if the programs that we're implementing actually work. So if the data doesn't support those programs, that means those programs don't actually work and have an impact in our community. So one of the things that they're very focused on is us gathering data for each of the programs that we do. And I do also want to say that the data that we've collected through this program has allowed us to apply for other grants in our community. The COSAP grant is one of those. That grant was written based upon data that we had in our community. And also, the Just Homes grant that we received was based on data that we collected through the MacArthur Foundation's Safety and Justice Challenge. The second goal that we'll be looking at is case processing efficiency. And one of the things that I want to highlight here that we'd be looking at doing new in the future is called our Warrant Resolution Court. We're designing a program that is modeled after a project in Pima County, Arizona. And the goal would be to resolve outstanding warrants primarily for misdemeanor cases. This spring, the number of warrants that were outstanding was about 17,000. And so this warrant resolution court is an idea to bring those folks into the courthouse on evenings or weekends to resolve those warrants in misdemeanor cases. That allows us to not bring those people into jail when they're arrested on those warrants. It allows them to clear up the warrants and reduce a backlog that has occurred over the last number of years. And so specifically, the grant will look at paying for overtime for county security staff and state's attorney and public defenders. Originally, we had thought that it would also pay for the UJS staff, but we've decided to cover those expenses on our own. So this warrant resolution court is something that we're looking at new to start with the sustainability grant. And we'll be hopefully implementing that sometime next spring if the grant is authorized. And then another thing that we're going to do for case processing efficiency is to look at all of the programs that we have developed over the last couple of years, identify what works best, what can work better, and what is sustainable in the future. And one of those programs that we're going to look specifically at is pre-trial. And recall, all of the people who go out on pre-trial services are people who would likely be housed in the Minnehaha County Jail while their case is pending. But instead, with the pre-trial services that we have, we're able to hopefully release them into the community, have them show up for their court dates, and not commit new crimes. So we want to take some detailed looks at the pre-trial program and see what is sustainable for pre-trial in the future, what works best in that program. The third goal that we look at is substance use disorder and mental health. Obviously, the full evaluation of the link is something that is ongoing right now. And we want to reassess how the link meets the goals of the Safety and Justice Challenge and see if it's meeting the goals that we initially thought that it would. And also collaborating with other programs like the COSAP grant, the Just Home Grant, the Link, Our Leaders of Tomorrow for Justice Impacted, and activities that are ongoing at Urban Indian Health. The fourth goal is community engagement. And we've done a number of things to engage the community over the last couple of years. And there are a couple of things that we would like this grant to do in the future. And one of the things that I really want to highlight as a proposal for these next couple of years is a new project that's being proposed with Safety and Justice Challenge funds through Urban Indian Health. The new program would serve as a mobile crisis unit that would be staffed with community health workers, nurses, mental health professionals trained in trauma-informed and de-escalation tactics. This is a program that Rapid City has, and Urban Indian Health looked at that program. They've already met with the Sioux Falls Police Department to see if that type of program could be implemented in our community. And we thought as part of this Safety and Justice Challenge grant, it would be a great idea to have this program implemented in Sioux Falls. And so grant funds would support that program over the next couple of years. I also want to highlight, at the bottom, it talks about hosting conferences, trainings, and other events. Through the funds we've received so far through MacArthur, we've done a number of training series over the last couple of years, last couple of months, actually, for folks that are involved in the justice system to understand the cultures of communities in our, in Minnehaha County. So we've had some folks come over the lunch hour and talk about homelessness in Sioux Falls, and how can we, as people in the justice system, identify with, how can we interact and respect people who are homeless in our community? How can we understand where they're coming from? We've had programs planned for the African community, the Native American community, and these events have been very well attended, and I think have been beneficial for everybody who's gone. But the other thing that I'm most excited about is the events that we've held in our park system this summer. So far through our community engagement efforts, we've had three park events, generally from 5:00, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Our first event was at Meldrum Park. We had 95 community members from the Meldrum Park area come. On August 2nd, we held an event at Emerson Park that was also in conjunction with National Night Out. And we had 78 community folks from that neighborhood attend. And then just a couple of weeks ago, on August 18th, we held an event at Granite Valley where there were 114 people from that neighborhood who came. We served hot dogs and chips and watermelon. We had inflatables. We had other community partners come with craft items. And these events were so incredible. Law enforcement was there. The fire department was there. Kids were ecstatic looking at all of the equipment. There was a nice little repartee between the police department and firefighters. Kids were putting stickers everywhere. Families were there, getting to know other people in their community. And these events have been hugely popular, and we're looking forward to continuing those events in the future. We had one more event planned this fall in conjunction with the Hayward Park opening. We understand the park has been delayed, and the Parks Department actually approached us and said, hey, we're not going to be able to do that. How about you do it at this other park? And I believe it's going to be at Linwood Park. I should have written down the date, but that shall be really exciting. So those are the items that I wanted to highlight from the materials that you've already received and had an opportunity to look at. We're asking that this third round of grant funding be approved. It is a reduced level from the amounts that we've received previously, which is the intention that we make it sustainable and be able to do these programs on our own. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Judge Homan?
Yep.
So I think one of the things, and you mentioned this, is that it's really important for people to understand is that while we get this money from an outside source, from a partner, it's really local people who are spending a lot of time, and I think part of the reason that we're here today and we've got a short turnaround is because we've spent a lot of time looking at what we're spending this money on and making sure that...
There we go. Making sure that the solutions fit our community and are things that really impact here. So it's not some national push down where we have to do things that MacArthur's asking us to do. We, you know, we do data because MacArthur's asking us and because we can use it ourselves. But these are all programs that we think really fit our community. And I just think people, that that's really important to emphasize for folks.
It is. There's programs, you know, MacArthur has programs all over the country. And the great thing about the program is we're able to identify the things that work for our community and that make an impact in our community, because all of the communities are different. Even though Urban Indian Health is looking at a program similar to what they do in Rapid City, our two communities are very different. So what Urban Indian Health would be able to implement here is probably going to look a little bit different from what's ongoing in Rapid City, and certainly different from what's ongoing in other communities where the Safety and Justice Challenge is, is being implemented. Other questions?
Just have a question. Excuse me. The pre-trial assessment, how many people have we diverted from jail, probably being in jail for a few days versus frankly, out? And how does that affect the warrant issues that we also issue on a regular basis?
I don't have an answer for you today, but I can certainly get that number. It's been hundreds and hundreds. It's significant.
Yeah. And a dumb question, the 17,000 warrants?
Yes.
Do we prioritize those based on the charge or the date, or how does that work?
I believe they're prioritized based on what the charge is. And so what we envision the warrant resolution court to be, as I said, is primarily misdemeanors. About 13,000 or 14,000 of those warrants are misdemeanor warrants. And depending on what the warrant is for, let's say an individual gets stopped for a traffic offense, and they have a misdemeanor warrant. It could be for a petty theft or, or something of that nature. That individual would go into custody, likely based on the amount of the warrant, could spend a couple of days in custody if they got arrested on a Thursday or a Friday. And so this warrant resolution court will also help reduce the number of people who would go into custody. And we can just get those cleaned up.
Thank you.
One more comment, and it's kind of dovetail off what he said, because we talked about warrant resolution court and pre-trial services. And pre-trial services is to assure that they make it to court on time and stay safe without reoffending. And I'd just like you to touch a little bit again about the low-level people that are on these, like you just said, on the, on the warrant resolution and pre-trial services. We don't let people out who are dangerous to the community. They're screened heavily before they're put back into their home. And it does, now, I'm probably giving all the explanation, but it, it keeps them at their job, and it keeps them in their home, providing for their family instead of the county doing it. But I probably said everything, but if you could speak to that.
And most of the people, frankly, who are available for pre-trial services are people who have co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders. And they just haven't been able to make it to court. And so having this one additional level of somebody that they're checking in with to make sure they know when their court date is, is, is a way we can keep those folks out of jail and hopefully connect them to services, which is one of the things that we really want to look at, making pre-trial sustainable in the future, is, is finding a way to make that warm handoff and get those individuals connected with the services that they need.
And at $200 a day to put, almost, to put them in jail, it makes sense if we can keep the low-level offenders out and at work.
It does.
So our agenda says it's a briefing, but I do need a motion so we can sign off on this before September 16th. So I've been corresponding with my state's attorneys here, and we can do that. So I would look for a motion to approve the signing of this grant sustainability.
Make a motion to allow the chair to sign this, or is it for the judge?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and we'll do a roll call. Vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is a briefing and consider a motion to use the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds, to begin procurement of vendors for the Minnehaha County radio infrastructure upgrade project. Mr. Bosman?
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have in front of you a briefing, and then we'll talk about a motion to potentially begin working on this project that we've been talking about for some time now. And what it is, is the radio infrastructure project. And I'm going to start off by saying that earlier this year, you authorized ARPA funds to be used for some fire departments, the rural fire departments in our county, for those mobile in truck radios and the portable ones that they carry in their belts. We've actually received half of those radios in already. So we're happy that they're coming in sooner than we were hoping, which is good, because that means we can get them programmed and get them out there. They're very appreciative of the support of this equipment and technology that they're able to use now out there with their life-saving skills. As part of the equipment side of it, that's the radio things. Now, we're going to talk about what talks to the radios and how they can talk to each other, and how we can talk to our dispatch centers. And that is our radio towers. That is the key backbone to our state infrastructure system. Currently, on the map here, I'm going to try to scroll down, just drive here a little bit. We run out in the county on primarily two towers. We have one by Wall Lake, and then we have one that is northeast of Baltic. Those two towers are our big, heavy lifters for our Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, our rural fire, all of our ambulance services out of Garrettson, Del Rapids, Humboldt. Those are the two towers that we mostly use off. If we get closer to Sioux Falls, then we can start hitting some, some of the Sioux Falls towers. But the map that you're looking at, the blue shaded areas shows what our current good coverage area is when we're out of our vehicle with our radio that's on our belt. Anything that's not shaded blue is a dead area. A lot of times, we'll get out of our vehicle, and we can't punch out. We can't talk to our other responding units that are incoming. We can't give updates to Metro Communications. That also affects our paging areas, too, for our fire and EMS folks as well, too. Some of the fire meetings we've been to in the past, the rural fire folks, especially on that western side of the state, have shared extreme concerns with not being able to get timely notifications of emergency response needed. So those two towers are our big, our only ones that are doing anything right now out there. We have a proposal to increase that coverage. As you can see in this map here, it shades in all of our weak areas. But what it's doing is we are utilizing existing structures to put additional antenna equipment on. Putting up a new tower comes with a cost, because you've got to have, pay for the actual tower, the concrete, the fencing. If we can partner with existing towers and structures that are out there, that's our goal, to expand our network. Off to the far western side of our county here, we have, it's a KKLS tower that we currently have some, some fire paging capabilities on already. So we have a good relationship with them to potentially expand our dispatch antennas onto. Colton has a water tower with existing tower antennas on that we, that aren't our antennas, but we have a spot we can go there. Baltic, there's a tower that is owned by the city of Sioux Falls, actually, where they use it for their Ocarfur system, and we can go on to that one as well. One other area on the east side of our county, in Garrettson, that is their water tower. It's the highest point in Garrettson. But what it does is it allows us to expand our network coverage out there, especially the Palisades State Park, where we have many water rescues down in that ravine area. That is a dead zone for all radios right now. This would fill in that gap tremendously and help us do our work down there. One I'm going to bring attention to is kind of right in the middle of the county, by Hartford area, just a little bit. That is currently a tower, as you can see, is not in the condition it's supposed to be. That one was knocked down in one of our many windstorms that we've had. It was an older tower. It was potentially looking at being replaced, I think, at one point, but the wind just said, you've got to replace it quicker than you expected. And so that one is on a property that we are working with the homeowners on to see if maybe if Metro Communications is the current owner of that tower. There is some insurance proceeds that have been received from the damage to the tower. We're trying to figure out whether do we want to stay in the business of owning towers, or do we want to partner with people that are going to pay to put up the towers, and we can put our antennas onto that existing tower. So that one's kind of a questionable, what we're going to do there, but there is a need for that, because that fills in that Hartford Lions area. The beneficiaries from this infrastructure not only are just your first responders. We have county highway that's running on this infrastructure system. We have our state DOT, our Highway Patrol. It's a state radio network. So part of that also is we want to have some communication with the state to see once if we can partner and they can play a role financially in helping us with this big lift. They are going to benefit from it as well. Now, we want to have that discussion. That's going to be a little bit of time, which is why we're going to look at pushing this, you know, doing this project mostly in 2023. What goes into the actual tower, inside each tower, or excuse me, at the base of each tower is a structure that houses more or less the brains, the electronics, how it works, network connectivity to the system. Motorola is the proprietary company that is required through the state radio system. That was something that we, with actual equipment, we had to find the right vendor and go through the procurement process that way. We will still follow the state, the same federal procurement processes if ARPA funds are authorized. What we would do is, the project would include a potential tower replacement at that northeast Hartford site. That's the one that was bent and blown down. I can say potential, because we're still figuring that one out. The actual simulcast system, which includes your project management, engineering, installation, and testing, that's the Motorola component of the project. We need to have network connectivity to each tower site. That's the fiber optics that's going to run and allow that equipment to continue to be connected. And then the backup power, each has to have a generator, has to have HVAC cooling system, so that way the equipment doesn't overheat. It's very expensive equipment we want to protect. So at this time, it's estimated that the project, as proposed, with a complete estimation of around $3.75 million. The quote from Motorola itself, just for that, the, the brains of it, the equipment at, at those sites, is $3.2 million alone. We had placed, I think, a rough $3 million of a placeholder in ARPA funds. That was before Motorola decided that they needed to increase their costs, and as many things do adjust over time. So this is why I'm bringing this forward to you today, is to see if we can get authorization to begin securing, following federal procurement standards, some sort of processes to start locking in these prices before they continue to adjust. We anticipate doing the work in late 2023, but if we can lock in some of these prices now, that's going to be beneficial for us versus me asking this, this time next year, and things are $4.5 million.
Questions? Commissioner Barth?
Captain, so most of the irregularities of the coverage map are caused by terrain. Is that right?
It can be, yes. Terrain, and then also distance to your closest tower dictates the signal strength.
And this has been an issue for these many years, along with getting the actual radios for the upgrade. Thank you.
Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
I know we've had a little bit of a chance to talk about this in the past, but this just seems like a really wise use of ARPA funds in a way that benefits every citizen in Minnehaha County, and I'm very supportive of it.
My only question would be, and I support the idea, too. Obviously, we don't know what the final cost is, so will you be bringing us updates as we get an idea so we kind of know where we're at? I know you're working with the Auditor's Office, too, to keep track of where we're at, but...
Yes, certainly. I give periodic updates.
3.2 and 3.75, still a lot of money, so.
Exactly.
All right. I would look for a motion and...
Make a motion to approve this potential expenditure, and I have another comment.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Commissioner Barth?
Just Commissioner Bender brought it up, how it benefits all of us. But it also benefits the traveling public from Massachusetts or Washington State that happen to come afoul of, you know, our weather or whatever in this area. So it's better for everybody, the safety of the whole public, not just Minnehaha County.
So I have a motion and a second to approve use of the ARPA money. Pro call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item number twelve is consider a motion to approve the updates to the county policy on mileage reimbursement. Carrie Deaver. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a request to update the handbook to reflect a new mileage rate of 51 cents per mile. The reason for the request is the state recently increased their rates as well. We're not obligated to follow those, of course, but we have a past pattern of doing so, so we're requesting your approval on this small change.
Other questions for Carrie?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the mileage update in our county policy. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is consider a motion to authorize Human Services to hire a full-time Safe Home Program Assistant. Carrie Deaver again.
You might remember this request from the budget hearings earlier this year. We spent some time talking about filling this position or these roles as a full-time position versus part-time. We've tried a couple different options for getting in staff, and we're coming before you right now requesting that this actually be filled as a full-time. Our intent is to use this in, over the night, where it's been a little bit more challenging to find variable hour staff for that. And Carrie, enjoy our here if you have any additional questions.
Is there any questions for staff or Carrie? I would say they have worked very hard and put in a lot of overtime trying to cover staff, so it's definitely needed outside of our budget cycle. So I would look for a motion.
I move, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie, Joy. Item number fourteen is fiscal year 2023 budget hearing. Susan from the Auditor's Office.
Good morning, Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. Here today to bring our budget back to you for a review for our budget hearing. Want to review some of the requested changes that we have received since the provisional budget was approved at the end of July. You have the memo in front of you, but I won't go through that in complete detail. As far as going through things, I'll just start with our general fund, as that's where the majority of our changes have been. And we have increased revenue in our general fund by just over $277,000. The majority of that is coming through interest income adjustments. We have seen favorable interest rate changes since provisional budget was set. And as we had received additional appropriations requests, it, as we were evaluating how those expenses could be covered, that was an area that, based upon interest rate changes, we feel comfortable with the changes in there. As related to appropriations for general fund, we have just over $291,000 in requested changes. I won't go through these in detail. I'll pick a handful of them to go through the larger items. You'll notice we have budgeted approximately $100,000 for election postage. That is related to the fact that we anticipate re, needing to redraw the precinct lines to try to eliminate those dual district precincts. That will require voter communication as we change precincts. That is an estimate at this point. It could be less than that, but that is what we feel is appropriate to budget. We did have a couple of larger items in the Sheriff's Office through the jail, as well as the Sheriff's Office for vehicles. I'll just pause there if you have any questions on either of those items. Okay. The other two larger items were in the Highway Fund. As you can see, we have increased appropriations by $683,000. Our Highway Superintendent Steve Groen had provided a memo explaining what that increase was related to. It's just due to timing of projects and shifting things around from that. And then on our Building Fund, we have increased appropriations by $55,000 related to the first floor jail refresh. That just reflects changing costs to, for those projects that have been ongoing. And then we had some small changes in the Fire Protection Fund and Library Fund and Museum Fund. Any questions on any of those items?
Questions for Susan? Nope. We've heard this so many times.
As you can expect, the item that you just approved related to the Safe Home Position is not reflected in, in these, these materials, so we will update that for the next meeting in two weeks to have that be reflected in there. And then also in your packet, you will have just a cash applied analysis as well as the updated proposed means of finance for your reference.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Are you completed?
Yes, I am.
Yes, okay. And this is a budget hearing for the public, so is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on our proposed budget? We will be approving this budget the end of the month. I do not see anyone moving, so I think everybody's okay with our budget. All right, thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment between Minnehaha County and the state of South Dakota for Bridge Improvement Grants Agreement 717457, Structure 50-290-131. Mr. Groen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. In 2020, the state of South Dakota received federal funds from Washington to start a federal highway local bridge replacement program. Minnehaha County applied for two bridge replacements and were successful. Since then, the state has additional highway funds available to assist the local agencies with the 18% local match. So this is a good deal for us. This amendment changes the county's requirements from 18.05% down to 5.3%. It's going to save us about $57,000 for structure. This first one is for Structure 50-290-131 on 483rd Avenue just northeast of Carson.
We always like money coming back. If there are any questions on that structure, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
And we need a roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. And item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment between Minnehaha County and the state of South Dakota for Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement Number 717456, Structure 50-208130.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent, this is identical to the previous item, except this bridge is on 257th Street, one mile north of Renner just west of Highway 115. Just like the previous structure, this will save us $56,560.
Motion to approve with a comment.
A second.
Commissioner Barth.
Actually, it's a question. Steve, is, is this, do you feel that we've been treated fairly in this year's bridge improvement plan? Because in past years, we've had issues.
We have a preliminary engineering grant that we're submitting this month, and then we have a couple replacements that we're going to be submitting at the end of the year. So we haven't, we did pretty good last year. We were awarded two out of the three we applied for.
Did I get a motion? I didn't. I have a motion and a second. A roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Item number seventeen is authorize the chairman to sign the Minnehaha County Jail bed per diem contract with Lake County for 2022 housing. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Warden Mattson with Minnehaha County Jail. In front of you is a housing contract with Lake County reflecting the 2022 housing rate and much like with the Moody County contract that I was up here a couple weeks ago, we'll send them a letter for new pricing in 2023 towards the end of the year.
Okay, any questions for the warden? Look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve and then I'm going to say something.
Have a motion.
Second.
A motion, a second, comment.
Mr. Warden, thank you for being here. Just prior to this meeting, we had a building committee meeting and our facilities director talked about some hundreds of thousands of dollars he's going to need to spend to fix a few things on the jail. When we look at the rate that we charge prisoners from other counties, do we take into account the maintenance of the structure along with the cost of food, medical, and attorney's fees?
Yes, sir. We go off of the, the federal calculation to come up with our housing rate. So I worked with the Auditor's Office in doing that. I submitted everything for 2023 and I'm waiting to hear back. So I, I don't want to say what my, what my number is yet because I'm waiting to hear from the feds.
Thank you.
And court services is not included in that. I think you asked for lawyer fees, but that's not included in that.
When we get sued, we have to.
Oh, that's kind of off.
My dietary requirements aren't being met.
Okay.
You know, on two diets, I wasn't getting enough food on one.
And I have a motion and a second on this one, and it's a roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen is a first reading of the major amendment for number 22-02 and authorize the auditor to publish notice on a public hearing of September 27, 2022 for consideration, to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised sewing ordinance for Minnehaha County to amend the High Prairie Ranch Planning District Development District Sub-Area Distinction of Property described as Lot 20 of the High Prairie Ranch in addition to the Northwest One Quarter Section 8 Township 102 North Range 49 West from Sub-Area D to Sub-Area A. Kevin Huckman, it's a mouthful.
Good morning, I am Kevin Huckman from County Planning Department. Yes, this is a first reading for a major amendment that was just read. The change in subareas from Sub-Area D to Sub-Area A would change this parcel to roughly an agricultural parcel to then a residential type parcel. The property is located in between Renner and the city of Crooks, kind of to the northeast of the Crooks-Renner exit of the interstate. The, this item was first brought to the Planning Commission on May 23. Planning Commission had some concerns about the potential of additional, or over additional septic systems and the potential for what that might cause being close to the Big Sioux River. The, it was then heard again on August 22, Planning Commission meeting, and the, the petitioner did hire a company to dig holes out there and found that the soil was conducive for septic systems. But even with that information, the Planning Commission had other concerns regarding precedence of other residential development in the area and the density zoning that, that the county uses. And the Planning Commission unanimously recommended denial. So this item here is the first reading, as we mentioned, and it's to authorize the auditor to publish notice for the second reading where you make a decision on it on September 27 of this year, so.
Any questions for Kevin? This is just for the publication notice? No questions, and I look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second just to publish the notification of the hearing on September 22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 19 is consider a motion to approve a solid waste permit 22-01 for the purpose of seasonal bio-solid storage on the property legally described as West One Half, Northeast One Quarter, and East One Half, Northwest One Quarter of Section 12 Township 102 Range, or excuse me, 102 North Range 49 West, Minnehaha County.
All right. So this item is for a solid waste permit. The city of Sioux Falls Water Reclamation is applying for this to temporarily holds biosolids on the site, and this would be from the Waste Lagoon. So here's the highlighted area up on the screen. It's approximately a four acre area of 160 acre parcel. The, the temporary storage means that during the summer, they would bring storage to the location, mound it up, let it dry out, and then after the harvest is done on area fields, they'd be able to apply it as a fertilizer on agricultural land. So this would be just during summer and early fall months of storage. The applicants have taken their proposal and gotten approval from the South Dakota State Department of Agricultural Natural Resources. The County Planning Commission heard this item and provided a conditional, approved a conditional use permit for the application of biosolids and storage on the site. And so, but since it is a, a solid waste under our ordinance, we have to bring it in front of you as a solid waste permit. The permit, staff does recommend approval of the permit, and it has seven conditions. These conditions are roughly the same as what the, the Planning Commission approved at the conditional use permit. There were some slight changes in wording, but the result is the same. And it would become effective immediately. Solid waste permits are, have to be renewed every five years, so if there is something that can need to be addressed, it would have to be, it can be re-brought up at the five year mark or earlier if it does not meet the conditions. And up here, we got a little bit bigger map of the whole area for your review. And yeah, the, so staff is, action is needed to either approve or deny the solid waste permit. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Kevin? I have a couple. Kevin, was this operating without a permit?
Yes, so this was an item that was brought to our attention because the township found out that they were, was having troubles with trucks running up and down the roads. They got the state permit and the, the city was unaware that the county required a permit for this action. As soon as the county notified the city that they needed a county permit, they stopped hauling and obtained their permit, and they've been hauling to the landfill for a temporary location where they're already permitted for the use.
So I'm wondering, I don't know how long, maybe you said how long they've been using that site, but if we, I'm sure we have a fine for operating without a permit, and so I'm curious about that.
They have to apply for the conditional use permit, and so they pay the $250 fee. They had to pay a double fee, I believe, is what, how the fine works.
Okay. I'm also wondering about the road district permit, which I know we don't do, or the road district agreement, and so I'm wondering where it's at with that road district agreement because there will be more than one truck a day, and so it's a lot of heavy use on the county, or not the county, on the township roads. And so where are we at with that?
So I have been told they do have a road haul agreement with the township, it'd be Mapleton Township. They're about a little over half a mile of distance from the county highway to the driveway of this location. I reached out and asked for a copy of that and I have not gotten a copy quite yet, but that is a requirement of the, the permit, is that we have to have, obtain a copy of that road haul agreement.
I still have two more things, so I have a list. Are the, have there been any complaints from neighbors?
There was a couple neighbors that came to the Planning Commission meeting. Their primary concern was about dust on the road that has been their, what the meeting concerns were.
Okay, and I lied, I have two things. One, I wondered if there was any interest in having the permit less than five years. So I'll let you think about that while I ask my next question. Is there anybody here from the public or the city? I'm assuming you might be city, but maybe not. Is there anybody here from the public or the city that wants to even speak on this? There's no one. So then my, my next question would be back to, are you interested in doing the permit for less than five years just to see if there's any complaints? Five years is a long time.
I would say that that's our normal process, that we should just follow our normal process.
Madam Chair, I, I would agree with Commissioner Bender. I would also say that, that DNR, Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, you know, they're, were kind of brought into question as a rubber stamp and whether they actually do any inspections or follow through on any of the conditions was a concern that the public had.
And the good thing is, is this product is used in agriculture, which is what we want, and it's less haul time for our agricultural community to pick it up at the site and put it on the field. So there's a lot of positives to this project. So I would look for a motion to approve or deny.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kevin. Item number 20 is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a quick claim deed to complete. a quick claim deed to complete the transfer of certain parcels of real property to the city of Sioux Falls for the Law Enforcement Center.
Ben Kite?
Good morning, Commissioner Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Uh, yes, so I have before you a, a quest to approve for you to sign a quick claim deed to complete the tran, transfer of property, uh, between the city of Sioux Falls for the, um, Law Enforcement Center. So on or about August 5th of this year, uh, the county's, uh, it was brought to the county's attention that by an outside engineering firm that land occupied by the Law Enforcement Center had not been, uh, fully transferred to the city of Sioux Falls as approved by the county commission in a memorandum of understanding dated July 24th, 2001. Uh, that was agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. I've included a copy of that MOU, uh, as Exhibit A, which includes the description of the property that should have been transferred. I, I asked the state's attorney's office, uh, along with the assistance of the registered deeds office to review the status of the title of the real estate in question, and they confirmed that it had not all been, not all the parcels had been transferred to the city as set forth in the MOU. So to correct that oversight, uh, the state's attorney's office has prepared a quick claim deed, which was also attached to your documentation. Uh, if, if approved, uh, we will transfer the remaining, um, parcels to the city of Sioux Falls. So that, and, so we're asking for your approval of the county commission, uh, of the quick claim deed, which will then sign that, and then, um, it'd be presented to the registered deeds for recording.
Questions for Auditor Kite? Funny the things you find.
Yes, it was, you know, again, I think, uh, our facilities office was working with this engineering firm and through their due diligence, um, discovered this, uh, error.
Yeah. Thank you to them. I need a motion.
Move for approval, Benega? Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to do the quick claim deed with the city of Sioux Falls for the Law Enforcement Center property. Uh, roll call vote?
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number 21 is consider a motion to declare a cattle barn at the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds as surplus for destruction. Tyler?
Good morning, Tyler Plack, Commission Office. Today we're requesting that an existing cattle barn at the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds be declared for surplus and then destruction. The structure is destruction. The structure is 30 feet by 120 feet and is in poor condition. Uh, it's only used about 10 to 12 times a year, mostly during the Sioux Empire Fair. Tearing this down will also give room for the construction of the new youth livestock building, which the, you, as the commission authorized April of this year. Uh, Mark Crins, our facilities director, will coordinate the actual teardown of the building, and the, included in the map is a, included in the packet is a map that shows the facility that would be torn down. Um, and again, the request is to declare this building surplus for destruction.
Questions for Tyler? Look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to declare it surplus.
Second, huh?
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have commission liaison reports. Any reports? Okay.